September 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Woodstock Community Unit School District 200 Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag behind you or the flag behind us.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the government of this state, what we believe in, what we are, and what we do.
Roll call please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Present.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Hedley?
Here.
Mr. Hobo?
Here.
Mr. Rosselli? Here. Mr. Peruzzi?
Here.
Okay, first item of business tonight is our consent agenda. You've had a chance to review the consent agenda already. Take a minute to look over it again. If any members of the board wish to pull any of the items on consent agenda, please look it up. Please pay. Note, there's also a personnel addendum on the desk. There are no items to be pulled. If any board member would want to make a suggestion motion, it is whatever material, please remember to include the agenda as part of your motion.
Move to read the reading of the perfect consent agenda that is printed in the board agenda, including the September 2nd, 2025 personnel addendum.
Got a motion by Mr. Peruzzi, second by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call please.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hobo?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Rosselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, next item of our agenda then is our recognition.
Hi, gentlemen. I ask the board to recognize our 2024-2025 spring art show winners. We're very excited about that. We also have a park in the hallway so we can see the way in and see on the way out. We can take pictures over down here and have time to talk with their families. We're very excited about that. And also, we started our staff spotlight with Clay Academy this evening. We ask you to approve that so we can recognize those students in our staff.
All right, move to the decision process resolution. Whereas Board of Education and Community Unit School District 200 wishes to recognize the contributions of these individuals, aware of District 200's benefits and his relative accomplishments, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education and Woodstock Community Unit School District 200 hereby just know special recognition and a certificate of achievement on behalf of citizens of the district. You have second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Mr. Peruzzi. Roll call please.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Hobo?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Rosselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Today, so we're going to follow up on each winner for our show. Your certificate, shake one hand please, and step back for a big group picture. All right, first from Woodstock High School, Frankie Scott. From Maryanger, Maya Marder. From Deep Street, Lily Toronto. From Greenwood, Cameron Paulus. From Furwood, Riley Ramsey. From Olson, Candy Rock. Look at everybody down there. We need a little more room, okay? Great down. Good, great down. From Woodstock York, Miranda Michaels. From Norfolk, Lily Gilbert. From Creekside, Ella Morris. From Westport, William Truman. From Clay, Candy Hyde. And from Deep Street, and winner of the superintendent's award, Hazel Metz. All right, both here, all in the middle. Mr. White, complete the pictures, Paris, please, come up and take the pictures. All right, we're gonna get tired together. Big smile, big smile. One more, one more, big smile. Big round of applause for her. Thank you very much. All right, now for best spotlight, I just want to introduce two great members of Clay Academy.
Good evening, members of the board of education, superintendent, colleagues, community members. I'm Dan Lovett, and sort of Clay Academy. My distinct pleasure to celebrate and acknowledge two distinguished colleagues. It's a great pleasure and a touch of Hollywood flair here tonight. I share with you a tradition at that place. As you're aware, we have our very own Academy right here in town, whose members are a multifaceted and multi-talented group. In addition to the teaching and student support services talents, members of the Clay Academy staff include a collegiate athletic coach, weekend world travelers, Woodstock School District alumni, a free agent's quarterback, signed with the San Francisco Forty-Niner School, 103 days back in the year 2001, a wedding vision, and a teacher who did, believe it or not, related to Santa and Mrs. Claus. You can probably tell the talents at the Academy is vast. We're here tonight not to celebrate the unique talents of the Academy staff, but to shine a spotlight on the true star of our school district. Our incredible talents. Now, although you're all under your seats, and it will be worth it, I promise, this expense is justified. I'm going to share with you some awards that we handed out at Clay recently. Each award recipients were not chosen lightly. The Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences awards recipients receive an Oscar to commemorate their achievement. Now, the Clay Academy Award recipients received official one-of-a-kind Clayton, the Bulldog statue, to celebrate their accomplishments. Although I love nothing more than to share the recipients of each of the 23 categories of youth tonight, I promise I won't do that, because we don't have the time. So instead, the Academy's governors have chosen two tremendously distinguished individuals to highlight and involve here tonight. Our first award for best art direction, and this year, rather this year, the Clayton goes to a visionary who transforms the ordinary into the extraordinary, our art teacher, April Diamond. April works her magic at the Academy Olson Elementary and Greenwood Elementary, so her talents are truly benefiting students near and far. When you walk into April's classroom, you're not just seeing art, you're seeing a world of creative possibilities. Her room is vibrant, rather her room is a vibrant studio where every student is encouraged to be an artist, and perhaps equally important, to be themselves. April has a unique talent for seeing the potential in every brushstroke and every sketch, and I say that in both a figurative and literal sense. She fosters an environment where mistakes are simply happy accidents, and self-expression is the ultimate goal. Whether she's helping students find their voice through a messy clay sculpture, or guiding them to create their masterpiece, April's passion for art and her dedication for students shines through in every single thing she does. Our next award is for the best actress in a supporting role, and this year, the Clayton goes with a powerhouse art school community, and an absolute legend who's been with us since near 2005, our very own Michelle Worf. Every great leading actor or actress needs a phenomenal supporting cast, and Michelle is the definition of supporting sauce. As an associate or, or appropriately, actress in a supporting role here, she works tirelessly behind the scenes to make sure every student gets personalized support and the support they need. Michelle has remarkable ability to anticipate a student's needs, offer before they need to realize it themselves. Her quiet patience and unwavering support to help art students feel seen and valued is shown every single day. Her daily work is a masterclass in empathy and dedication, and we are so incredibly lucky to have her on our team. So on behalf of the Clay Academy community, I'd like to thank Board of Education, Superintendent Mull, for the opportunity to share these two remarkable colleagues here with you. Their collective dedication exemplifies a very vested education, and we're fortunate to have them among us. And on behalf of the governors of the Academy, I do have something to present to you all. It is a Clayton, and that's for you, and we have a Clayton here for you, instead of an Oscar, or a reward. Members of the board, we then will take three actors.
All right, just a minute for everyone else to rest in our business. There are a lot of people who are not primarily the purpose of recognition there. You're all welcome to stay. We appreciate you coming. You're welcome to stay and see what goes down. Uh, we're gonna take a two-minute break, but anyone who doesn't want to stay for the rest of these hours, you know, keep doing your housekeeping. Thank you all for coming. This is Alfred Sanders. Thanks so much for coming. Okay, next item of our agenda tonight is communications. Communications are back. The community members who district employees who express a point of view not to debate an issue. There is a sign up sheet for the public to identify name, address, phone number, name of organization representative, if any, and a written script on the topic to be addressed. Comments are generally limited to three minutes in accordance with Board policy 2.30, and otherwise governed by Board policy 2.30. We'll start with all the comments. We do have one person who signed up who wishes to address the board, or maybe should address the board, and that would be Colin Jackson. Colin, you have two votes of word at this time.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I just came to say that I'm a teacher, a full teacher of a certain profession all my life, and I've been kind of hoping that I can share with you a part of what I'm seeing now, because my topic is going to be cursive writing, and I've been passionate about handwriting and cursive writing for a long time. And recently, I opened up a Woodstock Independent, and there's an article by Cheryl in there all about cursive writing. And if you need a copy by the time I give it to you, I was so excited, and I thought, this is my chance to come here and show my passion for it. Um, so here from the Woodstock Independent, thank you very much. Um, in this world of technology, I think it's really important that we don't dismiss handwriting. It supports not only one thing, which is not handwriting. One, one class board, it encompasses all the things, and I, I think handwriting in general should be upgraded, and we should look at that a lot more than we do when making it in our classrooms. Um, and its benefits, um, the benefits that I, I see that we need to, and especially, this is, this is my, there's a loophole, I feel, in, um, handwriting, because I know that District 200 is doing, having classes in handwriting, they've tolerated a variation about hearing not there. But there is a loophole where, where the students are in sixth grade and now in high school, they not know how to write in cursive, because they have not had the lessons. Covid is part of it. I know parents need to work on it also, but there's a loophole there, where they don't know how to write it, so if they can't write it, they can't, they can't read it. And I, I see that as with my own grandkids and children in the mystery, where they say, Mrs. Jackson, we haven't, we haven't learned it, so we need, we, um, we all need to, and I think that's kind of sad. Um, and in Cheryl's article, it shows how extending, um, the handwriting is, it extends your personality too. And if we know, and we see somebody that wrote surprising handwriting notes, we can say, oh, I know who that is, it's my mom, or my grandmother, or my daughter, or my sister, because it's an extension of your personality. And just think of it, all the things that we do these days, we need, um, we need to sign with a signature. Financial documents, health documents, official documents, checks, um, and it's very important. And I guess, one thing, it also helps with your creativity, because if you write in cursive, and you're good at handwriting, I think it is art. These, these two such examples of words are, are very powerful, but this could also be an art too. So lessons that I, lessons that I want to pass on, um, handwriting is a life skill. It's just not one skill, handwriting and reading and writing. It's a real skill that the kids will take on forever throughout their lives. So, and use it as an enrichment. I just saw on the paper how well the Woodstock schools are doing in the state, and let's do this too. Let's upgrade it up and push for, push for handwriting in our schools, and what we can upgrade, and be proud of the students when they come out with a beautiful handwriting. Thank you so much, and thanks, thanks to the independent group for putting that in place. Thank you.
Thank you for taking this time to come and address this, I'll let you.
Thank you.
That's everybody who's signed off. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board at this time who have not signed up? Let's call the public, comments. Okay, then we'll move on to our next item. Next item is staff comments. Are there any staff comments at this time? More comments. Okay, then I'll take care of our communications. Uh, next item is, uh, on the agenda then is our superintendent's report.
Thanks for the great start to the school year. Those three weeks have gone really well for us. Great energy in the building, with our staff back and our students, great learning opportunities. And whether in the most parts, probably, like follow-ups are good for us too, and some of the buildings, so, you know, great start. I'm excited to land into September and hope to continue that. Uh, most of our summer projects are done. Paula's team did a great job in the building, starting the year. You walk down the track, Larry, you know, field is amazing here. Catanis courts at both high schools are really good, so, uh, that, that's gone really well. The solar project in north continues to be on schedule. If anyone heading out towards north, you know, towards the north with field, in that farm field, you can see the field really, the solar field really taking shape. We've got the panels on. They continue to work. Um, excited to see projects over that park. There was a lot of her waiting for us, right? There's a long process for us to get there, but you can see it candidly now, touch it. You're not supposed to touch it, but I mean, you know, I mean, you can, you can get close and see it, at least, and notice there, we're, we're excited. Um, so that's, that's been really, for us, a great process. Still gonna be a while, still a little spring. Um, a couple of acres, we're already talking about the fencing tonight, but, but it's part of it, it's been a long time. I think, I just think that's good energy too, exciting for the modelists. Uh, two weeks from Thursday, September eighteenth, we'll have our first update school improvement day for the school year. We have four of them throughout the school year, and obviously, update of student instruction, and then start of day, then herbicidal, then we have teacher education professional though in the afternoon, so, one message that will go out to my parents, but we're the first one to come up, just to get that, because we are. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is unfinished business. We have unfinished business, so we'll move to our new business. First item in our new business is a review of the 2025-2026 strategic plan goals.
Thank you. Just brought back, but I'd rather play again. See if the board, if you actually want to see, we'll bring a final draft to you, uh, for your approval at the next board meeting in, uh, in two weeks, three weeks, actually, I think it's the 23rd of September. So any feedback the board has, we absolutely take.
Do any board members have any comments or anything to say about the 2025-2026 strategic plan goals? Okay, well, our next meeting is 23rd of September, and at that point, this will be up for a vote to approve the plan goals. If you have any questions or anything, please refer to Dr. Mull or appropriate people in that regard, if questions are counted by them. Next item is the approval of the insurance committee recommendation to medical stop loss.
The insurance committee met on August 22nd. The committee made an appointment of eight education members, administration, and a member of each of our four bargaining groups. Uh, we met with our longtime consultants, Blake Dastowski, who's down at Bayberry. Uh, they made a presentation with one item of business that was renewed for our stop loss insurance. They had seven bids that went out to market with, they came back with seven verified, where they called qualified bids. They walked us through those, and then they made a recommendation that we go with Sunlight, or they're a bit on a stop loss year this year. The major reason for that was that it would reflect over $300,000, um, uh, $300,000 lower than what our current plan is on that. So savings of over $300,000. There was a few questions, some discussion. At that point, the committee voted unanimously to bring that recommendation here to the board.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Brian?
With the two, uh, our current insurance and the one we're looking to go with, apples to apples, with everything.
Yes, that's the, they work with this company as well, as much as they work with Optin, who's our current carrier, and that was, that was a question that came up, as far as they, they have like top tier verified bidders, and they're both on that tier.
I mean, I think about that process for us, anytime ago in the Health Committee, we've got representation from all our unions uh, at the table, asking questions, part of it, the board members, the show Carl, and so, but they do a nice job there. I think we give them all information, ask them all questions too.
Does anybody else have any other questions regarding the insurance recommendations? Fifth item, suggested motion on page 97 of our table.
Move to approve the recommendation to accept the stop loss insurance bid from Sunlight Insurance for the time period of our full first 2025 through September 30th, 2026.
Why Mr. Hedley, taken by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call please.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Rosselli?
Yes.
Mr. Hobo?
Yeah.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, next item of it is the authorization to accelerate pay, pay to Gordon Food Service.
Good evening. This, excuse me, this item was brought to me, and brought my attention by our director of food servicing. We currently, um, probably purchase 90% of our food supplies, with the exception of various reported food service. By taking advantage of the opportunity that they've presented and paying them on a, on a more timely basis, as opposed to on a monthly basis, we have the opportunity to have 1% credit. Our average bill with them is about maybe $80,000 a month. This week it was about $880 a month, which is about $10,500 a year in savings that we have for that. So what we're asking tonight is the opportunity to, um, to pay them on a timely basis, being every, within 10 days, but of course, you can still see that on the list of bills, so you know what we're paying, what we're improvisation. Do that, take advantage of that, uh, credit.
Is anyone having questions or comments regarding the authorization to accelerate the aid to Gordon Food Service? Uh, I, I have some somewhat mixed feelings about it. I mean, I, I understand that our, our billing department does a great job of paying attention to what's going on and everything like that. I have mixed feelings about this. I certainly would like to say cut out the dollars, if I can do that, I'd rather do that. Uh, the process we have in place, though, is designed to make sure that before, you know, the, the board members are, are being aware of what's going on, and when we do the financial care meetings, the purpose of those is to, now, at least, uh, it's supposed to be to look at the bills, see if there's any questions about anything, and doing all that stuff. By paying the bills ahead of time, we kind of circumvent that. Um, and I, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that myself. Um, you know, I, I, a couple of years ago, there was somebody somewhere else in this one of the cities who stole $2 million of Gordon Chicken by, by facing, by picking their bills. And this seems to be, you know, the, the reason we have the financial committee, the reason we do those things, is so that we can be apprised of what's going on, and we can make sure that something like that doesn't, you know, theoretically, for us to make sure something like that doesn't happen. I trust our employees that they don't have that issue, probably don't know who's coming down, you know, might be somebody later we don't know, something like that. So I have some kind of mixed feelings about this. Is there any way that this can be accomplished without having, in, in the, in the, from a, from our perspective, we could do something differently, where we could achieve the same result without having to hold, to, to go around the processes in place? I mean, could we just pay it, I mean, could we just pay the same amount every month? Uh, or do something like that that would just set it up so that we would not have to change the processes, whatever they're designed to guarantee fiscal solvency?
We can certainly investigate, see if there's another way around it. The, the way it was presented was they wanted to receive payment within 10 days of sending their invoice, and just for your knowledge, it doesn't circumvent any of the approvals that happen internally. So for example, it would be entered by the secretary in the food service department, is approved by the director of food service, and then comes into the accounting area, and is approved again before it's paid. So there's, there's several steps along the way before you even see it on the list of bills, actually, but we can certainly see if we can find some other, um, other options. It's not, it's not a, you know, deadline, um, type of item, which is in the process, so we can certainly do that.
But that is what we're here, right? Your, your point does represent that, that's what we're talking about, because it does change the way we can do business. But it was a savings we wanted to, if you're not comfortable, then we can look for something else, we act. You know, this isn't a no buy, I mean, you need, raise a chance to save some money, but it does circumvent the process we have now, so that, that is what we're wanting to bring, so you can talk about it.
I understand.
No, I, I appreciate the fact that you did that. Oh, yeah, and I'm just saying, you, you were right, though. Exactly, what I'm just saying, what you said is correct. It does change our process for sure, that's why I think it's important that you talk about it.
And, and I raised the audience something that just kind of, I have some discomfort with. Other people may not, but that's my personal feeling on it, so I wanted to raise that issue, so.
How long does it take usually to?
How long does it take usually to, before they're paid after the invoice is done?
You know, it really depends. Uh, because we're a school district, we have up to 60 days, but we always wait until the second meeting of the month. So if, for example, we received, we received an invoice in early August or, you know, like this time of year, you wouldn't see it until September 23rd or the second meeting in October, depending on the cutoff. So it could be anywhere between 30, 45, 60 days, definitely not within that 10 day window.
How, um, how frequently are we invoiced by them? Do they invoice something or do they invoice more frequently?
Actually, they are starting to invoice us almost daily. As soon as they send a shipment out, they'll send an invoice. So what's happened in the past is that the food service secretary, she accumulates all of those and puts them together on one, one bill to be paid. By doing this, we probably just look at them in that 10 day range and try and process them a little bit, which is what we take advantage of that. But, you know, as Dr. Muller mentioned, it's not a hill to die on. It's just an opportunity for us to generate some savings. And it's certainly something we can try and be more creative and find some other ways.
What, what are the, I don't know, if you're able to look them up, but if you're at the last, I was about six consecutive months, the last six months that we've had kids in school, what, what are the, where are the bills about to?
Typically, it's about 80, 80, 90, it depends. I mean, sometimes it's closer to $100,000, sometimes it's $75,000, it depends on.
There is variance there.
There is a little bit of variance, yeah. And I don't think as a, as a vendor, I don't think they're interested in spending this on the flat bond they want to be paid for what they sell. It would be hard for them to start.
Would it be possible, would it be possible to do, for example, do, I don't know, it would be obvious in September, September, October, do those for the same month so that the next month would be accelerating the, the timeframe in which we pay the next bill? So let's say, for example, you would do September and October, and then in November, we have a bill that would be due, we, we receive sometime in, but most of November would have been approved on, uh, at the November meeting, would that be possible? If the timing is different.
We can certainly bring it to their attention. I mean, it's, it's pretty much a standard process with them. It's not something that they've offered us as a special incentive. They offer this to all their customers. If you pay within 10 days, you get a 1% discount. So, but we can certainly bring it to their attention.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? A third is a suggested motion on page 90 of our materials, if anybody wishes to make it.
Hope to approve the accelerated payment for Gordon Food Service to realize the 1% discount across the products purchased by the food services department. Second.
Mr. Minister, second item, Mr. Peruzzi, roll call, please.
Mr. Homma?
Yes.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Upstate.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay. Then on to our last item, which is the rejection of the Woodstock North High School photovoltaic system site package project.
All righty, we went out to bid back in August for the, um, site improvements for our solar field, which essentially was fencing and then potentially some seating for the grassing area. We received one bid which was almost double what our, um, what our architect had suggested it would be. And we also didn't receive any reply from some of the folks that have been working with us on fencing. So we weren't that comfortable with it, so we wanted to bring it to your attention. And our recommendation is that we reject it and give it another try.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the photovoltaic system site packaging? Now, this is a suggestion motion on page 99 of our materials.
Hope we reject the single bid for site improvements around the Woodstock North High School photovoltaic system.
Photo.
System, print read bid language here for spring election.
Second.
And what's your, Mr. Homer, second item, Mr. Headley? Roll call, please.
Mr. Homma?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, that's it for our new business. Next item, our committee reports. Have any committees met or do any committees have any reports? It's our last meeting. All right, if there are no committee reports, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So, uh, motion by Dr. Ferris, seconded by Dr. Bidwell, roll call, please.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Peruzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Homma?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?